If you use Facebook or Twitter to keep in touch with your friends, then you should follow the City of Orlando as well. From events at the Amway Center and downtown Orlando, to notifications from our Emergency Operations Center, even from my office too, you can keep in touch with your city government. To find all of the city's social media channels, go to citiorelando.net/socialmedia. We're here to celebrate another great effort and collaboration to improve our community's sustainability as we move towards being the most sustainable community in the entire country. Orlando is already the fifth largest market for hybrid sales in the entire country, so we're moving towards sustainability.
Kulem developed the ChargePoint America program with the goal of accelerating the deployment of electric vehicles in order to reduce oil consumption, to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and to create jobs. We provide a turnkey solution for electric vehicle charging, and it has benefits for the EV driver, the host who installs the station, and also for the utilities that provide the electricity to fuel cars.
OUC is so excited to help launch the ChargePoint America program. For more than 87 years now, OUC has been providing reliable electric service to our customers, and we look forward to the future. We want to ensure that we deliver that same level of reliable service to power their electric cars.
We are the very first city in America to install a ChargePoint network charging station for electric vehicles as part of the ChargePoint America program.
We are truly honored to be the recipient of a million and a half dollar grant that was provided through the Green retrofit program, which is part of the Recovery Act. These funds will be used to make dramatic improvements to the individual apartments, as well as the common area and the exterior of our Caner Two building here right behind us.
We always appreciate the funding opportunities that are provided to the City of Orlando by HUD.
This is a well-deserved competitive award. We had far more applications than we could fund around the country, and we were enormously impressed with what we saw in this application, and it's consistent with what we've seen from your team time and again in making sure taxpayer funds are used effectively, quickly, and efficiently.
When you're born, you get a birth certificate, and when you die, you get a death certificate. And that dash that you do in between, what are you doing to try to make this place a better place? And that's what we're doing.
Above all, what we're doing is we're making a better life for the people who live in these units. We're making a life for people who live in these units that they can actually enjoy. These are senior citizens, these are people on limited incomes. Don't we owe that to them?
Today is a day about honor and tribute and remembering Officer Richard A. Jones and Officer Belvin Perry, Sr.
These statues are representing Officers Jones and Perry, who served as trailblazers, opening doors for all of us and the City of Orlando to embrace diversity.
It is truly befitting that we...
Good morning and welcome to the Monday, February 7, 2011 workshop of the Orlando City Council. Today, we're going to be looking at our limo system, and we have spent a lot of time evaluating the expansion of the very successful limo circulator system. So, we have a study that will take a fresh look at alignment alternatives, potential ridership cost impacts, and hopefully give us the right answer on how we expand the limo to eventually reach hospital to hospital and Citrus Bowl to Thornton Park, which is a very important component of if you are getting off of Sunrail and wanting to get anywhere in and around the downtown, you need the means to do that very easily. We're conducting it following FTA alternative analysis procedures so that we can leave open the prospect for FTA funding in the future, and we have already been awarded a TIGER grant, which I say "TIGER" a lot, and it stands for Transportation Investment Generating Economic Recovery. We've been awarded $10 million associated with the Creative Village Moving Paramore Ford project. Congresswoman Brown will be joining us a little bit later and talk about her involvement and how she was very successful in helping us obtain that $10 million grant. The project team has completed a series of nine meetings to solicit public feedback on the proposed alignments, and at this time, I'm going to get asked FJ Flynn to come up and present the limo study update. FJ?
Good morning, Mayor of commissioners. First of all, just like to kind of indicate that this study process is a partnership, and so I just kind of want to recognize some of the partners in the room today. First of all, we've got federal transit involvement in this. None of their folks are here today, but we've worked real well with Lynx over the last couple of years, and so working on the project team with us is Laura Minns, Tony Walter, and Edward Johnson have been working with us. And then on the city side, Claudia Korobkov has been very involved in the process. So, without much more delay, I'll just get started. So, the purpose of today's workshop is basically to present just an update. And the other thing too is what we're trying to do here with this is seek input through this board on the alternatives for the east-west corridor, the Paramore, Creative Village BRT corridor, north-south corridor, and basically discuss with you recent and upcoming public agency and outreach events, and review with you the schedule for both the north-south and the east-west alternatives analysis. So, what is the purpose of the study? And as you had said, Mayor, it's just to basically provide a fresh look at the potential to expand limo. Currently, the system has over a million riders, and if you kind of put that in the context of putting those trips on our local road network every day, you can imagine what sort of impacts that would have to traffic management and operation. So, limo is very critical to our downtown transportation system. So, what we're going to be looking at through the alternatives analysis is mode and alignment. So, what type of vehicle? Is it going to be a bus? Is it going to be light rail? Is it going to be some other form of transportation, whether it's in exclusive lane or in mixed traffic? Look at who the actual riders are. So, who's riding the system, and where are they coming from and where are they going to? We'll also take a look at the costs and the impacts on budget, and then review potential funding strategies. The study area originally was basically Florida Hospital, downtown, downtown to Orlando Health, and then Thornton Park over to Paramore. And so, in our initial discussions with our commissioners, we kind of expanded the limits of that study a little bit. We took a look at some areas out in College Park, as well as over along the Mills corridor as well. And we're basically looking to link activity centers, and we already mentioned the two hospitals, Amway Center, Performing Arts, Soto, and Mills Park was really the reason we kind of expanded the study over to Mills. And then also, we need to capitalize on our connections to Sunrail. So, the study focus in January, we refined the east-west corridor alternatives from five down to two, and later on in the presentation, I'll show you kind of a map that details what those five corridor alternatives were. We developed alternative Paramore-Creative Village alignments, so we have, I think we started with three, and I think we're going to look at five different alignments for that phase. And we've presented these refined alternatives to the public, and as you had said, Mayor, we've had extensive meetings up to this point. And March 15, the alternative study for the east-west corridor will be complete, and the reason why we are advancing the east-west corridor over the whole system analysis is to capitalize on some federal funding that may be available to kind of take that east-west corridor further along in the process towards construction. And then by September, we'll have the whole north-south and the entire system analysis done. And so, as you look at the map, you can kind of see that the route shown in red is kind of the main trunk line that we're looking to kind of expand from downtown north, and then we're looking at alternatives kind of in those shaded areas. So, study progress to date, since April of 2010, we've done all the data collection, and so that's user surveys, and then we've basically taken that and we've kind of modeled where people are coming from, going to. We've conducted a bunch of public workshops in August, October, and then this past January. We developed initial alternatives for the east-west and the north-south corridors, and developed preliminary screening evaluations and capital cost estimates. And so, basically, out of that capital cost estimate, we've come to the determination that our expanded limo system should take place in kind of a BRT mode. Looking at BRT versus a light rail kind of increases the cost by a factor of close to 10, I think is what we had determined. In October 2010, the Creative Village TIGER grant was announced, and so it was one of those things where we kind of, the PB and HHI team kind of had a hand in kind of putting together some of the data. So, we're trying to merge our study process in with the Creative Village work to kind of create a more seamless effort to make sure that the FTA folks get the materials they need to make an assessment on that important project. Recent public input, this is just a list of some of the open houses and events that we've attended recently. I think tonight, we'll be up in College Park, and there's some other Main Street meetings that we're having this week as well. Over 200 surveys were completed. I'll show you some of the results from the surveys a little bit later. These three slides basically show us what our initial corridors were that we had kind of screened, and so in the north, we had 13 different alternatives, including some College Park alternatives and some that ran over to Mills, as you can see. East-west was a little bit more limited due to the traffic operations during Amway Center events and street closures. It kind of really narrowed the focus of where we could run limo. And then on the south corridor, we had about 10 alternatives that we looked at, and then we had another five alternatives that we looked at for Creative Village. So, the corridor screening process, basically, early in the process, we established six goals that we wanted to achieve, and so they're listed here from improving mobility, transit accessibility, ensure equitable transportation options, you know, enhancing environment and social integrity, as well as developing transportation options and promoting, you know, economic development at the same time. And so, out of those six basic goals, we had other criteria that we would use to kind of rate each corridor, and then once we had that, we would kind of continue to kind of refine our options down from 33 that we had initially. So, in looking at the east-west, we're looking at a BRT only. We had basically had screened down to two alignment alternatives, and so, as I had said earlier, we're really looking at kind of a Central Boulevard main trunk line, and then we have alternatives that bring the BRT down off of Central in various forms. And here's basically, kind of shows depending on what the use is that we want to touch, the corridor kind of drops down in different locations. As far as the refined alternatives are concerned, when we looked at the Paramore-Creative Village corridor, again, we're looking at BRT only, basically connecting downtown to Creative Village and other destinations such as FAMU, the Federal Building, United States Courthouse, and then also getting people to the Amway Center. We basically, I think right now, we're looking at running it down kind of Huey, Garland, and then pulling it off on Washington and Division to kind of service that area back in there. And this basically is kind of the map of what we're looking at as far as the alternatives on the Creative Village. And I'm going to insert some of the survey responses here as well, and so there was a question that was posed, you know, "Do you like the Paramore-Creative Village corridor alignment?" Seventy-four percent of the responses, yes. Thirteen percent, no responses, and then 13 of no responses. So, a lot of support among the surveys that we've received so far on that alignment. Now, in the north-south, the project advisory group recently went through the corridor refinements, and we'll begin to present those to, in a public meeting setting later on this month and probably into next month as well. And the reason why the north-south quarters is not as far along as the east-west is, again, we've kind of put the east-west on a priority timeline to capitalize on federal funding that may be available. They have some additional north corridor refinements. You can see option number eight kind of has the route connecting Florida Hospital up to downtown College Park and back. And then, you know, alternative number one is just basically downtown to Florida Hospital and back. Other options that we're looking at, up Orange Avenue to the hospital and over to Mills Park and back, and then a couple of hybrid routes, kind of trying to do both, connect College Park and Mills Park. There's another hybrid. It was interesting, in the north quarter, when we had met with some of the neighborhood groups, connecting available parking to the businesses in that north-orange corridor seemed to be something that this northern extension might be able to accommodate. So, really kind of looking at a lot of different aspects of, you know, how do we actually help stimulate some economic development through limo as well? Then on the south, we've basically got just a few refined alternatives, running it down either Orange Avenue. The Boone Avenue extension is a potential option, but then we have issues with running the bus on brick streets, and so it really, the study is really kind of focused on getting the service down south Orange. That seems to be something that may work the best. And then, whether we come over Columbia or at the main entrance to the hospital to get over to the commuter rail station is something that we're still exploring. Once we get to the kind of the southern end of the route, we basically want to look at connections over to Soto, and you can see kind of the hatched area at the bottom of the maps. Basically, we stop at Soto, do a two-way on Orange, and then basically connect down to the Publix Shopping Market and kind of that little strip center down there, south of Michigan, or just kind of create a box around Orange Avenue and kind of hit Delaney as well. So, basically, study schedule, February to April, we'll continue to address public comments, we'll refine the screening and corridor alternatives, we'll develop the concept and design and cost estimates, and then conduct, basically with this board, a locally preferred alternative meeting, and I think we'll actually do that for the Paramore BRT loop. And we're all, we're doing all this to kind of capitalize on our federal earmark application opportunity, which is a $7.9 million allocation of funding that the city and Lynx may be available to take advantage of to kind of further this project. So, February to September, we'll continue, as I said, we'll complete the system alternatives And then, rest of upcoming events, on January 27, we had a Lynx Board of Directors briefing. February 7 is today, we've got two, we got a College Park meeting and a Baptist Terrace meeting. We've got a Main Street meeting a little bit later in the week. February 14 will be at Wade View, and then I was talking to you about the locally preferred alternative. Probably March 7th or 28th, we'll be back to this board to kind of get the LPA approval for Creative Village. We're going to Metro Plan on March 9, and then we'll just, again, continue with our public involvement. And this is the contact information. I did forget at the beginning of the presentation to kind of introduce the consulting team, which is probably the heart and soul of the project, and so, I'm sorry, Alan, Alan Danaher with PB Americas, and then Ginger Corliss with HHI Design, sorry about that, guys. And so, with that, I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, FJ. Questions, comments?
Commissioner Line.
Yes, thank you very much. Sorry, we're running a little late, but it's just so ironic to me, we can go to Florida Hospital and points north and south, and we can't get up to Paramore, along Church or along Washington, which makes more sense to me economically and where we're already stationed. So, I'm looking at your consultants, although I know they don't know about Paramore, but I know you do. So, I'm just curious about how do you eliminate Church Street, and if we don't want to close off Church because of Amway, the next best alternative is going along Central, of course, along Washington, where you can hit FAMU, and you can hit residents at Callahan, and all people who attend the Callahan events. It just seems that when you say Paramore, you're not talking about going into Paramore, you're talking about the peripheral areas along Paramore, and I would really want us to, other than Amelia, when we're talking about the TIGER grant, circling, pay attention to that area.
Okay.
As many years, the primary riders of Lynx, let alone limo, out of that area, and then those of us who were on the freebie, and then went to the limo. So, I think to literally leave a whole street out going in, considering those riders, is important. It's just a real misfortune to me.
Okay, yeah, we had, initially in the project schedule, we had kind of looked at a lot of different alternatives that ran east-west, but when we got into the Amway Center operations and the street closures that are involved during events, Church became very limited. We actually even tried kind of running it over the Anderson Street Bridge, and then back up Division and kind of working our way back there, but right there at Division and Anderson, we had a street closure issue that we were going to have to deal with as well. And so, that kind of really steered the conversation, but we can go back and kind of take a look at kind of Washington and see what opportunities we have along there, if you'd like us to take another look.
You're leaving a whole population out of limo that is very easy to forget.
Yeah.
And I think if we can't do Central because the buses are there, or because other things, but it has to be close enough for a population to move into downtown on limo, whereas everybody else is getting free rides and the people in Paramore can't. Just, you know, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. So, I know there are alternatives, we can't do Church, and that makes sense, but Anderson may not make as much sense getting through, because you're saying it's blocked, but is it blocked going west?
Yeah, well, basically, Anderson coming into Division is eastbound traffic only, so we thought about that as well.
But the more populated area really is Washington Street.
Right.
And you've got the FAMU Law School, you've got the State Building, you've got Callahan Neighborhood Center, you've got Terry Homes, you've got the Homeless Coalition there, so even if you're one block away, if you were to come along Washington and come back to Huey, and even make that east, that southbound over to Central and that was a stop, it just makes sense to bring those people having somewhere along Paramore Avenue to go for limo, just along. And I really preferred one on the north end, which would have been Washington, and one on the south end, which really would have been south of Anderson, or some way to move those people into downtown. So, just a recommendation to think of that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Stewart and Commissioner Dunn.
Thank you, FJ. And Alan, thank you. And Ginger, thank you for your work. I appreciate it. I had a chance to do several presentations with y'all, and every time, it's been professional, and y'all have been open to comments from the community, and I appreciate that. One thing I'd like to get from you, and just for my own benefit, is a list of where you've done all the presentations, I think you probably got that someplace, and then I know that I've got some other neighborhoods that want to come back now, we've begun to weed it down a little bit and get back in front of them, especially in the north area. FJ, I didn't see a whole lot going over the funding, opportunities for funding, potential funding schedules. Have you done much more on that, or where are you in that process?
We've kind of taken a preliminary look at it from basically the standpoint of, do we want BRT or steel-wheel, light-rail type setup? But really, we can't, we're not going to dive in, since we had 33 quarters, we weren't really going to dive into kind of the overall costs, and since the location is somewhat undefined as well, kind of if you need to bring stakeholders in to help pay for that, identifying who those stakeholders are, so we haven't really, haven't really kind of jumped into that too far yet. But as we get down to two or one locally preferred alternative, then we probably can go back and kind of take a look at really detailed cost estimates.
I guess the biggest concern I have is that if there's going to be a ridership fee, and if that fee is important, then I think probably that would help control a little bit of the location you go, the people who could afford it, in a sense.
Right.
And then addition to that is that other, easier ways to do a fee, could you pay $15, $20 a month and have unlimited ride and those kind of things? All seem to me, they may have an impact on who's going to get access to the location. So, when you begin to look at that ridership area from that standpoint, or the funding schedule, having that offset cost.
Yeah, basically, it's a fair sensitivity, and so ability to pay is one thing, and then willingness to pay is another. And so, in some of the, in the surveying, we've got some initial feedback on kind of what the, what folks' price tolerance is, anywhere from a quarter to a dollar, and, you know, what sort of percentage would support, you know, 25 cent fare, 50 cent fare. So, we've got some preliminary data on that I can forward to you.
When do we expect to get some of that on the, primarily the east-west corridor and the Tigers?
I'm really sure, I can check with...
Is that farther along than the other, or are we holding off on that until we...
Yeah, up to this point, we've really kind of focused on setting up the screening alternatives, the corridors, and kind of refining our corridors a little bit. We've probably got more generalized data on what the cost would be, exclusive lane versus in mixed traffic, but we'll have more detailed information on that probably later on, and I'm not sure if, Alan, well, I'll check with Alan, and I can get back with you.
Yeah, that's fine. I just want to make, the idea is if it's going to cost money, we want to make sure that's kind of in this mix in terms of the route that we select.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I know there are a couple lights on, but I want to acknowledge that Congresswoman Brown has joined us, and Congresswoman, we're doing a workshop on proposed limo expansion in the downtown area, and certainly a part of it is the Tiger Two Grant that you helped us secure for the Creative Village and being able to come down and touch the Federal Courthouse and the Florida A&amp;M Law School and to give access to the limo through that $10 million grant. There's a couple more questions up here. Would you rather, did I break here and let you come up, or would you?
No, I'm listening.
Listening to the conversation? Okay, great, we'll have you up at the conclusion then. Commissioner Diamond.
Thank you. FJ, good job, and I think you and your team have also done a good job of trying to keep people informed of what's going on with this project. I think you've done a good job of trying to reach out to neighborhoods and community groups, and, you know, first of all, thanks for that. Second of all, just to follow up on a comment from Commissioner Stewart, I know, I guess, five or six months ago, you did a pretty broad-based meeting at the Beardall Center, and I do appreciate you going to the Wade View neighborhood on Monday. I don't think that one is going to be as well-publicized as the one we did sometime ago at the Beardall Center that Commissioner Sheen was also at, but I think maybe now that you refined this a little bit, do you think you can do another broad-based meeting down there to try to get input now that you've got a more refined set of facts and issues to look at?
Well, I think Ginger's always willing to kind of add it. As a matter of fact, I think she had two Main Street meetings here within the last couple of days, so yeah, we'd certainly like to take a look at it. And I think probably initially the Wade View meeting not, might not have had as much significance, but in the meeting we had at Beardall, there were some, there was a lot of interest in kind of what happens on Delaney and maybe running a segment of it down Delaney, so we certainly want to get all those comments and thoughts as well.
Yeah, you know, because I think some of that came up during the meeting, and I give you all credit for listening to what people had to say and incorporating that into your ideas, and I think now that you've got some more things that might be of interest to people, I think people might be a little more interested in coming to a meeting as opposed to one where they probably weren't quite sure what was going to be, what was going to be discussed and how it might impact them. And now I think you've hit the point where it might impact them.
Yeah, certainly. And actually, another thing, too, is, you know, if the BRT doesn't end up kind of running down on a segment of Delaney, one of the things that, and having Lynx involved, kind of puts that on the radar screen. Right now, the routes that run down Delaney have very good, healthy ridership, and so maybe there's a way to sort of market or push those routes to residents of the Wade View area a little bit, a little bit more, so they understand that, yeah, you can get to Delaney, and you get down to Publix and Walgreens, and you can shop and come back. So it doesn't stop just at the BRT study, there's other information that we can kind of pull out of the study to kind of help with transit accessibility.
Yeah, and I think that's a fair point. Let me also just follow up on Commissioner Linham's point. I think it really is important to try to connect east and west, and I think Paramore has really been the focus of a lot of economic development activity, and it seems like running, you know, running a good transit service over there would only help with that. And I think she's right about enabling those residents to try to get on the transit and take it to the east side or north and south as that happens. And as far as Thornton Park, I would think also you've got a good amount of population density, you've got a lot of places now that people want to go to, and it seems to me like it would make sense to, from a ridership standpoint at least, to get that going.
Yeah, certainly. And actually, some of the screening, some of the screening refinement tools look at population served, but also transit-dependent population served, and so that kind of gets back to your question about, you know, serving people is one thing, but serving people that really need transit is another. And so those routes that serve, or those corridors that serve people that really need transit kind of are prioritized higher, and so we have looked at that, and we'll take another look at it and make sure that we're looking at all potential corridors.
Yeah, and I think that's sort of the argument for the whole north and south as well, as far as the hospitals, I mean, you have so many people working at the hospitals and going to the hospitals and going to the establishments like Soto near the hospitals, that I think that's important, and especially when you look at how your alternatives like Orange Avenue are working and trying to make them work as well as possible, but I know you're focused on that as well.
Right. Yeah, and when you look at the employment population at both hospitals, you know, looking at probably doubling within the next 10 to 15 years, the start of operations for Sunrail, and kind of making sure that once those people get to their job, they can still get to other points around downtown if they don't, if they don't have a car with them, so. Very important.
Thank you.
Let's see, back to Commissioner Linham, then Commissioner Sheen.
I'm just absolutely baffled about something Commissioner Stewart said. I'm not baffled, I am almost enraged. Is there going to be a cost for riders for limo, when I thought we were getting grants and other dollars to move this system as a freebie?
Yeah, what we're doing is we're doing a cost sensitivity analysis, and so basically, what would people's willingness to be if they had to ride it? And so there isn't, we're not taking in front of you any decision to start charging a fee at this point, we're just kind of looking at it, and, I mean, those options, you know, when you weigh ridership versus the cost, we need to kind of look at that, too, and so we don't want to do anything that would jeopardize the million-plus riders we have per year.
Thank you. And when we start looking at costs, my recommendation is, as we go west, I find it insulting to say it's been free for everybody for years, then we go west and say, oh, y'all got to pay. That's almost insulting to me. And thank you, Commissioner Diamond, people who need the transit, and if we go back and think all the years we've had Lynx, it really served to get people who needed, you know, have a job to places they work. And normally, these were people who were paid minimum wage. Limo sort of moved the working class downtown from one point to another, and even before limo, I think, I really liked the freebie better, because you just jump on it and that was it, and you didn't have to send a little lane. But when we were discussing light rail, the main focus, and Congresswoman is here, and we really worked hard on that, was to get people who couldn't afford or who didn't have cars to places they needed to get to. And this opens up another opportunity, and if there is a fee anywhere, I would look to businesses. When we've had this kind of system, and almost every large town was partnered, for instance, in Cleveland, the health centers, if you go along Euclid Avenue or Street there, you may have ridden that bus system there, I guess they call it BRT, or their limo or whatever.
Yeah.
The health system itself literally paid for most of that, and, meaning the hospitals, these competing hospitals have a whole, like a mile and a half or two miles, they own everything. They own the hospitals, they own the parking garages, they own the street, they own the buses, they pay for pretty much everything. And I would like for us to step outside of Orlando and look at some of those systems that can help, but I have to admit, in Cleveland, which is a decreasing population city, they do, and I did have my little freebie ticket, I mean, somebody gave to me, but you do pay, you get a little thing like we do here in Orlando. It's not a limo, but I really feel, as we move forward, that we not, and I don't know what my population said, but that's why I'm here to speak for them, to not stir it unless you, you know, just put it on the table, but to say, oh, we're going to go west and we're going to charge you. I think that, to me, ought to be the last resort, if a resort at all. We ought to look to the grants and look to opportunities in the city. If we come up with these dollars to do all the things we do, this is a system that's worked really well. Maybe we can take limo off of those special lanes, I don't know. What makes them special, other than the light changing? I see too many people moving up Amelia, they drive on the limo lane like it's a regular, you know, car lane.
The, part of the, part of the scoring criteria, if you put the BRT, if you put the bus in an exclusive lane, it has better run times?
Not Amelia, Livingston, but next to the bank. Everybody makes that turn to the west, they turn right into that limo lane.
Right into that lane. Yeah, I think coming out of the Lynx Central Station, some people may pull into that, too, and not realize they're in a BRT exclusive lane, you're right. But I think to improve your scoring, as well as to improve service, putting in an exclusive lane has advantages over running it in mixed traffic, particularly during peak hours, and that's one of the reasons why ours is an exclusive.
Don't get me wrong, I want us to have our own lane, whether it's high occupancy lanes on the highway, or Lynx, or freebie lanes, or BRTs.
Yeah.
That suits me real well. I'm just talking about the cost, and all of a sudden, the word fees on this dais is being mentioned, when we're talking about limo, and it's never been a fee.
Right.
And before then, I'd rather exit limo out and go back to freebie, where you don't need anything, I don't want to just go from block to block to block, I don't care. But I find it just insulting to talk about a fee when we're going to try to go west, and we hadn't even tried to go west, other than Creative Village. And I find that insulting, too, because that is a development, but there've been people living over there in Paramore forever, and I would love to see our service get to them at some point, not all the way to OVT necessarily at this time, but I think that's a destination, but at least to Paramore or Westmoreland, but surely, three points along Paramore makes sense to me. If we say Amelia, which is, I think we talked about that, bringing it up to Paramore.
Right.
And you say Washington, and at some point, there's something further south. But I was just, I thought I was going to puke just now when I heard that discussion about fees, okay?
All right, well, I'm, yeah, sorry about that. The other thing, the other option we may have is a fair free zone where everything downtown is, and if we do the long extensions out of downtown.
Then we charge.
Yeah.
And we talked about free zones for years.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what we had before with the freebie, was that free zone, and we've talked about free zones here, and I thought that's, that was the discussion on limo, that was our free zone. It was not some other cost. So when we interject a cost, it changes the dialogue, it changes the way we think and perceive things, and then it says, why is it changing now? And who is talking about a fee? I mean, I hadn't heard, this is the first I ever heard of it.
Yeah, I think the fee discussion kind of rolls into, when we, when we look at kind of making sure we do what FTA has asked us to do, I think the fair sensitivity analysis is one of those things that they want us to at least take a look at, particularly when we get into discussing how are we going to operate and maintain the system long-term. So there isn't, I don't think there's anybody kind of on the project development team or within the city or Lynx that's saying we must charge a fee, it's just something we, they want us to take a look at.
Well, I don't want you looking at it in my district, so, thank you.
Duly noted.
Commissioner, I'm not sure when you came into the meeting, but FJ had emphasized at the very beginning that the first route that we're looking at is the east-west that goes along either Central or South Street, and that we're trying to make sure that we apply the $7.9 million that we already have towards that first proposed east-west route, so that's the priority before the north and south extensions to the hospitals.
Right, I saw that in the.
Commissioner Sheen.
I'll forward, sorry, I'll forward some maps to you that show you what corridors we're looking at kind of in that east-west, and let you take a look at that.
Thank you. My concern wasn't just south and central, but hidden Paramore.
Right.
If you, the furthest point west, minimally should have been Paramore, was my concern. And I saw the other directions, but I didn't think it took us to Paramore.
Okay.
Commissioner Sheen.
Thank you, Mayor, and FJ, you know, College Park, Mills Park, Ivanhoe, those are activity centers, and I think it is important to, you know, to include them, especially since we've had issues with the parking, you know.
Right.
FDOT has taken over more and more of our local roadways. That might sound good until you start dealing with FDOT and they start taking all the parking to the local businesses, and then you have the businesses all upset because their customers can't get to them. So, I mean, there is a need, because we are building activity centers, we want to have healthy, you know, business centers, and we can't do that if people have no, if they can't park or they can't, you know, get there. So, I mean, I think it's important to support these activity centers. I really appreciate the South Corridor Sig, because I know a lot of my seniors have expressed a need to get around, and, you know, a lot of them can't drive anymore, and that's important as well. I'm glad you're going to Baptist Terrace tonight, because that's a, you know, a community who's expressed concern about losing bus service. And something about the bus versus the cost of parking, I mean, some of the parking downtown is anywhere from $5 to $20. If we can start getting the bus fares to where it's more attractive than paying $20 for a parking spot, which we've done, you know, I'd rather be able to get people into where they can afford to come into downtown, as opposed to paying a $20, anywhere from $5 to $20 for a parking spot, so I think that's important for us to look at, too. OU C did what was called the Bolt Bus many years ago, it was experimental, I think it was electric bus, and it went from west to east, from Paramore to Thornton Park, and we had a lot of ridership, but a lot of it was kids, so, you know, we need to figure out why the adults weren't taking that, and it kind of didn't work because, you know, they figured, well, you know, the kids aren't going to pay to ride the bus, kind of thing. So even though I think it's important to provide bus service to children, because the school system doesn't seem willing to do it, you know, we need to figure out why that ridership wasn't there, because we did do an experimental program with the Bolt Bus. And something else I'm a little bit concerned about is, you know, Lynx, you know, has had difficulty with funding, they haven't had a dedicated funding source, and I think it's kind of disingenuous for us politicians to say, well, everybody can continue to have everything for free, when they're shrinking revenues at the local level, they're shrinking revenues at the state level, and we might have to look at some, you know, costs associated with that, and this expectation that all government happens for free, we might not be able to deliver on that, especially with Amendment One, especially with people voting for tax cuts, we just can't make something happen for nothing. So I appreciate, you know, looking into alternatives. I supported a dedicated funding source for Lynx, I think we need to do that, I think it's important, but unfortunately, we haven't been able to get that done, it's been, you know, the revenues have been vetoed by the governor and different things like that, and I think that's really unfortunate, that, you know, we're stuck in the situation where we desperately need a bus service to connect to commuter rail, doesn't have the funding necessary to be able to do the expansion that they really need to do, to get people around once they get here. So I appreciate your work, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, FJ.
Thank you.
Good presentation.
Thanks.
All right, the best Congresswoman in the whole Congress has joined us this morning. I think you spend more time in Orlando than anywhere else in the state, and we certainly appreciate that. I can name off a million things that Congresswoman Brown has helped us with, most recently is a $10 million Tiger Two Grant that's going to help us expand the limo system, as I mentioned, to serve FAMU and the Creative Village and the Federal Courthouse. So Congresswoman, welcome, you're always welcome here.
Thank you, and I guess I can be the best Congresswoman, because I have the best city council and the best mayor, so it really takes a team effort, and thank you for receiving me this morning. You all were talking about one small part of the overall transportation system, and we're in the year that we're supposed to do the reauthorization of our entire transportation program, the six-year program, and in that program, we determine different projects, and I would like Nick Martinelli, who is my transportation person, but he's also on my legislative staff, to give you a few-minute update, and then I have a couple other remarks. But I want to mention one other thing. You know, I hear a lot of discussion about what's going on in the House as far as any bill. Keep in mind, whatever passes the House, everyone up here knows that, has to pass the Senate, and then the President have to sign it. It takes 60 votes in the Senate to even take up a bill for discussion. So in order to have, let's say, a comprehensive transportation bill, the bill must be bipartisan, and we must work together to come up with a product. We in the House passed the aviation bill, for example, four times. We passed it four times, it is yet to pass the Senate, so we're starting over this year from scratch. So that's an example, but we're hoping to get a six-year transportation bill that we will have several different components. One, which I'm very excited about for the first time, we're going to have a rail component, and hopefully, in that rail have a rail component. And hopefully, in, in that rail component, we're gonna have a dedicated source of funding for rail. You know, we're all excited about the $8 billion that the President put in for high-speed and upgrading some of the rail lines, but our competitor, China, the Chinese, they're spending $300 billion in rail, $300 billion. And that's, that's our competition. They understand the importance in, as I listen to you all graphing with, the importance of moving people out of cars and getting people from point A to point B, because that's where the jobs are. You can't, I mean, you cannot, you know, you can go downtown Brussels to downtown Paris, 200 miles, one hour and 15 minutes. Can you imagine what will happen when we're able to hook up Orlando and Miami, two of the number-one tourist destinations in the world, and the energy centers? I mean, we will be able to generate all kinds of jobs. So I am very appreciative how we're trying to move Sun Rail, because Sun Rail, as the Secretary said, the high speed got to go into a feeder system. It cannot be in a vacuum. And what you're doing even with the limo, everything has to work together to move people, goods, and services. And so with that, I would like Nick to come up for a minute.
Welcome, Nick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just give you a quick update. The committee just organized about two weeks ago with our new chairman, Mr. Micah, in the area. They should begin the, this work on the six-year reauthorization bill very soon. Hopefully, we can start at least with a portion of last year's bill that was developed by the committee. I think the wisdom in Washington now is saying that we really need to get a bill done in probably in about a nine-month period before some of the presidential election politics and things start playing into, into the, the action up in Washington. So, you know, we haven't had for a while now, you know, what, what we'll do is with the six-year funding, Congresswoman met Friday with your new Link's administrator and discussed some of the programs that they're trying to do and some of the expansion that they're trying to do here. You know, that, that will give them six years of regulated funding, the state will know what they're getting, FDOT will know what they're getting highway-wise, they'll know what they're getting transit-wise. And, you know, the, the transit agencies in the area will be able to plan for six years instead of a nine-month extension or a six-month extension, they'll know what type of money they're gonna get. We're hoping to have a, you know, a focus on transit because we see a lot of areas starting to move that way. So, but, you know, in the next month or so, we should see some, some committee action and some movement on the bill and a better idea of what we'll be working with.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and as I mentioned, on, in transit, we're hoping to get a $50 billion bill over the next six years. And you know, for every station that you develop, there's all kinds of activities that develop around that station, whether we're talking about childcare, jobs, it's just a real engine that would be a real kickstart for the economy. For every billion dollars that we spend in transportation, it generates 44,000 permanent jobs. And so, you know, when I hear the discussion about maybe we're gonna send the $2 billion back to Washington, you know, I, okay, that's fine. But we all know the big dollars is in transportation and infrastructure, and it's not creating pro, projects, these are projects that's needed. Our infrastructure is crumbling in the United States, and we need to come up with a definite dedicated source to how we're gonna fund it. I mean, because what we're doing is, we don't have a capital plan. So if we didn't have our six-year plan, then you can't plan, you, you know, in aviation, you can't bond, you can't do anything not knowing what kind of dollars that you're gonna receive from the federal government, and it's a partnership. And with that, I will take any questions that you may have.
Congresswoman, the, the, in the surface transportation bill, highway funding has always been allocated basically by formula or by right to the states.
By formula.
Transit money or rail money has been grant, you apply for a specific project. Do you think there's any willingness to go towards allocating rail money or transit money to states by formula?
I think this is the first time we're gonna be able to get a rail provision, and so we're working out the logistics of it. Keep in mind, when I got elected to Congress in 92, for every dollar that we sent to Washington, we was getting 77 cents back. I led the form, the fight to change that formula. And so we went to 92 cent on the dollar. That was $5 billion the first few years. So, but to get a formula change is major because, you know, when we look at West Virginia and these other places, they got our money and they want to keep it. And so we are a donor state in every single category, whether it's transit, education, and basically when they, we developed this great country, the small states got the same number of senators as the big states. And so therefore, even if you can pass it in the House, you cannot pass it in the Senate. And the timing that I was able to lead that fight was that we had more money to work with, and so we was able to change that formula. And it's been wonderful for us in Florida.
Thank you. Commissioner Linehan.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Just before addressing the Congresswoman, thank you for being here. I think I've seen you a couple of times this weekend. I want to answer my colleague about people wanting to have things for free. On the west side, the, my population, five and six, have supported Link's forever. As a matter of fact, there were very few riders on the east side, and we don't expect anything for free. We buy our tickets to ride Link's. But limo was not for the west side, it was for the downtown corridor and for the last 10 years or so. So I'm just thinking, if we're gonna keep it, I think the west side ought to have some of those opportunities that are free also. But look, I'd like for you to speak to, transportation is not an infrastructure that gets its money back. I mean, no place. You're not gonna have a highway that you build, and just by riding on it, you're gonna pay for the highway in so many years, any more than the train or Amtrak or anyone else. Of course, I can't find anybody, these are ours, who voted for the governor, so I don't know what's going on.
[laughing]
But who is literally halting our transportation projects that are so important if you are advocating opportunities for job in the state. But I'd really like for you to speak to the balance of what these dollars do. This is what government does for its people, and it doesn't pay us a profit in the end.
Commissioner, I would like to give you the exact statistics that I had in the hearing. We had a hearing recently in the northeast corridor about high-speed, and it's always such a discussion when we're talking about rail, that it needs to pay for itself. Well, there is no mode of transportation that pays for itself. It is a commitment that government have decided that we want to move our people, our goods, our services, and be competitive with the rest of the world, period. When you look at aviation, and we can give you the exact figures on how much we put into aviation, does not pay for itself. And if you look at the security that we put in aviation, in addition, none of it pays for itself. The ticket fee that you pay does not pay the cost of the security. And then when you look at the highway system, say something about raising the taxes on the big trucks, and they will come to town and shut you down. So no mode of transportation pays for itself. But 50 years ago, President Eisenhower decided that he's gonna hook our country up. And that was a great decision 50 years ago. But now, we've got to decide how we're gonna move our people, goods, and services around, and we've got to come up with an additional way that we're gonna do it. When you look at the fact that in Orlando, you have eight lanes, one more lane not gonna help us. We got to figure out how to move people out of that lane and onto mass transit. And it's, look at the environment and all of those other things that go into helping move people, goods, and generating services. And so, you know, Central Florida have a little history as far as, and Florida, as far as our commitment to rail. I am certain that that is behind us. And I feel that the business community, the elected officials, I mean, when you get every, Mr. Mayor led the fight on this with the Sun Rail, when you get every city council to vote for something, every member, you look how diverse you all are, and all the surrounding, every last one of them voted for Sun Rail, then that's got to tell you that there is a commitment, and we've been working on this for over seven years, that we understand the importance of moving our people. When it's 30,000 people backwards and forth every day on the I-IV, that's not acceptable. Look at the pollution that it is causing, and the cost, just the cost, and the number of accidents. So we have decided as communities that we're gonna move transportation in a different direction. And it's, it will pay for itself, but it doesn't necessarily pay for itself with the fare boxes.
Right. Pays for itself in safety, environmental concerns, moving people, time, because for every minute we spend on the highway backed up like we're in a parking garage, it's costing money for somebody.
And in Central Florida, it starts about 3 o'clock in the afternoon.
Well, I thought it was early than that. I've gotten caught in it.
We are gonna change that. Thank you.
And if you want to talk about cost, Christine, what's the proposed cost of the Wakava interchange? For one interchange on the highway system.
Right. But it's an option to ride that interchange, and when you have an option to go on it and pay and not pay, I think people who will say they would never go on it should not even have a choice in it. Because it's my choice every time I get on the 408 or any other toll road to pay, especially when I'm in a hurry, and my option is always to pay when I'm in a hurry, to get there to quickness and save a little gas or whatever else. And I think that's a shame for us to pull back because there's a toll. It just simply provides other alternatives that we ought to be embracing to move our community further. So I really appreciate you speaking to that. I appreciate Mayor Dyer's engagement on Sun Rail, and of course now, high-speed rail, and you know, my concern even from 1952, 54 with Eisenhower and highways, if you go back and look at the history, there were very few African-Americans benefiting. So my concern is, even when we do the work, we have to be inclusive to make sure that African-Americans, Hispanics, women, and whatnot are engaged. And I have had lots of discussion with the Secretary, I don't know whether she's still there, do we have any Secretaries in the state of Florida anymore? I mean, I don't know who's been appointed and not been appointed, but the Secretary of Transportation and our District Transportation.
The district person still is the same as we speak.
Yeah, Noyan.
She's supposed to be.
Right. She is, but I don't know who the other person is. She's out of Jacksonville, you know.
She's in Orange Park.
Yeah, wherever it is.
She's the city manager for Orange Park. But I don't think the state has named who they selected.
The state has not selected.
Right. I know she told me she was leaving, but I'm just really concerned that I'm asking you now in this public arena to really keep your eye on the prize that as we move forward. I believe like you that we're gonna have high-speed rail, we're gonna have Sun Rail, because I don't believe the state of Florida is gonna make a mistake this grand again, in our community again, to allow anyone to come in and determine that we should not have 100,000 jobs when we are at the highest, almost the highest in the country with unemployment. So, but I need that unemployment for the state and for the nation, it doubles when it comes to African-Americans just about, to keep our eyes that our community would be embraced also for these jobs. And we have absolutely experts, able, people with a little experience. There is nobody in the United States unless they went to Japan, China, someplace else, or Spain, who built a high-speed rail. So we're all on equal footing.
Right. Let me just mention something because you mentioned the minority participation piece. You, I know you know that the only agency, we have 13, that have a definite percentage for minorities is transportation. And now, the question is rail. Well, when the President put in the $8 billion, it came over in appropriation, and it did not come through the authorizing committee. So we had to have certain hearings, certain discussions so that we can make sure that in this rail piece, that minorities have an opportunity to, as I say, get a slice of my grandmama's sweet potato pie. I mean, we all pay ingredients. We should all have an opportunity to participate. And I know that's very important to you, it's very important to me also. I want to make sure that minorities, women, and labor get a chance to participate as we move our state and our country forward.
Thank you.
Congresswoman Brown, we thank you for your leadership and for updating us. And I do want to mention, as DC has become more partisan, you're a shining example of working with Mr. Micah across party lines for the betterment of Central Florida. You guys are somewhat different in your styles and your approach, but you've worked so well together, whether the Democrats have been in charge or the Republicans have been in charge. We've had either the committee chairman or the ranking member on both sides, and I appreciate how you've been able to work cooperatively.
Yes, I have, and let me just tell you a little joke. He was able to sit with Senator Boxer at the State of the Union. And so afterwards, we were having a little discussion about some projects that he wanted to do. He said, well, you know, I got a relationship with her. I said, keep in mind, one date don't constitute a marriage. So [laughing] we are working, but transportation is one of the most bipartisan committees in the House. I've always worked on, you know, the transportation, and so we've always worked across the aisle, and we will continue to do that. One other thing, the VA, you know, the Secretary of the Veterans Affairs was here last Friday, and we toured the new VA facility, and that is gonna be such a boon to us in Central Florida. It's a project, once again, that we work across the aisle on for over, you know, 25 years. And I am very excited that it is gonna be the engine for all kinds of development in that area. And we're gonna have 1,000 new jobs. We, it's gonna be 2,500 jobs out there, but 1,000 new jobs for the better, for people in Central Florida area, and the veterans will get a preference. So just wanted to mention that too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Congresswoman. And before we close, I want to acknowledge that Mayor Broome, one of my fellow mayors, is here from Wintermere, and we were glad we were able to train up somebody that could be your new police chief out there. Thank you for being here. And with that, without objection, we will be adjourned from the workshop, and we will immediately go into agenda review as soon as the head gives me the signal.